Okay, with that, I am calling to order school committee meeting number 1,646 on April 13th at 6:03 PM. Good evening, all. We have a request to move the business manager's report up because he has another meeting. And we like to make his life a little easier. So.
So moved.
Thank you. Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Seeing none, this is to approve moving the business manager's report up. Let's start. David?
Okay.
Dennis?
I'm.
Jim?
I'm.
Carl? Kyle?
Yes.
Yes.
Art? Sarah? And, oh, Kim's not here, so, all right. So we have an approval of all those here. So with that, let's turn it over to our business manager, Chris. Go to it.
Okay, thank you very much. I really appreciate this. I have one report for you tonight. It's the FY '23 warrant report. There's a number of them because we didn't have this last time when we were discussing the budget, so I can just go through them one at a time. The first four are the top of the page. Those are the annual warrants we ran.
Chris, can you just wait till everybody gets to that?
Page 6A.
Sure, yeah, no problem.
Okay, thank you.
What page?
66A.
So it's right here. It's gonna look like, this is a tricky one, Carl, because it's down here by the staple.
It's in the bottom. Oh, okay.
So you'd be looking for. It's right, you're right there. Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Does everyone have it at this point? It's in, it's in the packet.
You do have it, it's just in a, it's in a strange place.
No, I didn't do a packet.
What do you mean?
You didn't get a folder?
It's in your blue folder, which is in your packet.
The blue folder. The magic folder.
I don't know. I just, I didn't notice.
She was on a plane.
That's good, she wasn't here last night.
Oh.
All right.
I didn't know if she was going to.
Zoom in or something, okay. So let's just wait till the gentlemen have their 6As. All right. With that in mind, Chris, go to it. And look who's here.
Look at it. Here you go, Kim.
I can't believe it. You haven't been in one place for like three minutes. All right, and Nancy's?
I would just let him start.
We're letting, we're doing Chris out of order because he has another meeting. And the page you need is page 6A. Okay, Chris, go to it.
Okay, thank you. So the first few edits we have are manual warrants. The first one that we have for $18,000, that was all paid to Berkshire County Retire Act. The next one that we had from February 28th was $158,000. The majority of that was taxes that we paid of $126,000. These are payroll taxes. The next one on March 31st was just the final payment for the winter sports officials. And the second March 31st one of $152,000, out of that, $122,000 was payroll taxes. And we had another $22,000 for retirement payments. Then we just jumped down to the vendor warrants. These are basically accounts payable warrants that we pay for services or goods that we buy. The first one from February 17th, $340,000 total. Out of that, the majority of it was transportation. We also bought some oil.
There you are.
About $8,500. And we also paid $7,000 of our copier payment. So that was, those were the large expenses in that warrant. The next one on February 23rd was $174,000. Out of that, we bought $30,000 of oil. We also did an MTRS payment, that's the mass teachers' retirement, for $63,000. And we had a $20,000 special education tuition bill. The one on March 1st for $315,000, excuse me, the vast majority of that one was for Berkshire Health Insurance. Then we had another one on March 10th for a little over $100,000. That was really just made up of a lot of smaller invoices. There weren't any big ones that made it up. Copier for $7,000. And we had a behavior technician bill for $8,000. Those were the largest ones in that group. We also had one on March 30th for $12,000 to fund the spring athletic officials. We had one on March 31st for $416,000. The majority of that was in transportation, $173,000. We had a purchase of oil again for $26,000 and a mass teachers' retirement payment for $61,000. And then we had another one on April 1st, $304,000. And again, the majority of that was in the Berkshire Health Insurance. Or, I apologize for the typo.
Oh, okay.
I go with endurance, but it's insurance, not endurance. And then the last four that we have are all payrolls that we have, just the five weekly payrolls. You know, these payrolls go up and down depending on, you know, if it's, say, school vacation or holidays in there where we might have some people that are unpaid. We also have some that may have coaches' salaries paid during those times. So, you know, they tend to fluctuate up and down. They pretty much cover around $400 for each payroll that we have.
$400,000.
And that's all I have for this month.
Okay.
I can answer any questions anyone has.
I'll take a motion.
Please to approve warrants.
Thank you, Carl. We have a second on that. Nancy has a second. Okay, any questions, comments, discussions? Go right ahead, Carl.
I have two questions. One, with the athletic officials' funding, is the entire amount of the athletic officials' salaries or whatever we call it, is that paid for by the district entirely? Or is there a contribution from the state or somewhere else?
No, that's paid by the district. This is for, for the umpires and referees in spring sports. It would mostly be umpires. And what we do is we have a service that pays the officials that they go through to get paid. And we pre-fund it so that there's money available to pay them. And then if there's any either outstanding expenses, then we'll pay the rest at the end of the season.
Now, is, do we, do we contribute? I mean, I don't even know if the, if social security, for example, and health insurance, if it exists, is paid by the district to those officials? Is it? Are either of those things paid?
No, they're not. These officials are treated as a contracted service and they're not employees, so there are none of those expenses for them.
All right, and then, okay, good, thank you. And then I have one further question. And this is not a criticism, but the payroll, all the other warrants are contained in a voucher and the payroll warrants are not. Is that how it's always been done, to your knowledge?
I believe so, actually. You know, when I, when I do this report, I basically take the last, last one I present and then I update each line. And a lot of times the payrolls are kind of mixed around, but they're always blank for the voucher number. I'm not sure why, to be honest with you. But yeah, they weren't left out. There actually is no voucher number.
Right, and that's what I assumed. And that's how it's been done, over time?
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, let I take a vote. Let's start at this end. And Kim?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
And Art? And Kyle?
Yes.
And, yes?
Yes.
Nancy? And David? And then Bonnie? Yes, all right, unanimous. Thank you very much, Chris. And you, I see you're in your car. You can get to your next meeting.
Okay, thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you. All right. First thing we have is school committee minutes of March 2nd, 2023, meeting 1644.
Please to approve.
We have a second on that?
Second.
It's Nancy, okay. Now, I don't know which minutes I read for approval.
1644.
Let's see, 1644.
A.
Yeah, I'm just trying to remember. I may be giving you, I have changes, but I may be doing the wrong set of minutes. Because there were a couple of things I had. Chris is listed as administration. Is that how you want him listed?
He was listed, that is administrative.
Okay. And there is, you were added as a signator on the accounts. And all it says is that David voted no, but it passed. Everybody else voted yes.
Yes.
So that needs to be put in there. And, um, okay. And then there was, I think, a wrong word. The chairman's report, we don't want to change. It was efficacy. And I think the word that was meant there was securing. And that was about what I had. So since I don't know which minutes, that is the right one. Okay, all right. And then there were two roll call votes. David, you were zooming in on that one, right? Because you had voted. You had voted no on one thing and you're not included on the others. And you had voted yes on the other two roll call votes.
We were having technical difficulties.
We were having technical troubles that night.
I think that was the other.
That was another one because David was sitting over there when he voted no on the signature. So it's an error there, as on those two other roll call votes, he had voted yes. All right.
When you're finished, I have one, one comment.
Okay, go right ahead, sir.
Well, it's not a correction, but I can't believe that this is accurately reported. It's on page three, the third paragraph from the top. And it reads, H. Dennis Sears suggested that updates should be, this is the discussion. Put it in context, this is the discussion about Lucy Prashka's participation. And it says, H. Dennis Sears suggested an update, update should be formalized with a definitive process to be followed to prevent Lucy Prashka from attending any school committee meeting at any time. That can't possibly be correct. Because there's no way we can prevent her from attending.
But are minutes, what was said, not what is done?
I can't believe that that was, I don't think that could possibly have been said. It wouldn't, it certainly wouldn't have been said without objection because I would have objected. Lucy Prashka is a citizen of the, of the Southern Berkshire Regional, of one of the towns within the Southern Berkshire Regional School District, which has an absolute right to attend.
Probably not, probably not attending.
Probably not what?
Well, Kyle was right.
I'm saying, attending might not be the word.
So we should take that out, I think, because I think that's the prevention for attending is the issue.
Right.
I think, I think I would just direct them to go back and look at this section. We have it taped, right? So we would know what was said and can you clear it up?
All right, so you'll have Lynette do that?
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, and she'll check on the votes, those two roll call votes.
I think, if I can interrupt for a minute, I think the part we missed is something dealing with if she's here to speak. I think that was, that was the whole issue that we were debating.
I think it makes sense to go take a look and clear it up.
Okay, all right, so we'll have that done and we'll be okay on that. So with, with the corrections that were just made, unless there are other comments, I'll do a roll call vote. Yes, David?
If we're waiting on Lynette to update this section that's in dispute, then we can't really vote to accept the minutes since we don't know what the minutes are going to be. So I move that we, assuming this is in order, I move that we postpone that till the next meeting so Lynette has a chance to do that and we can review it properly in context.
I see. Anyone yet?
Well, what David said is simply incorrect. We, we can approve the minutes with the caveat that they might be changed and that change will, rather than table a vote on the entire minutes, with this single objection, not objection, this single comment, we can approve the minutes and with the caveat that when Lynette reviews it and presents either a corrected or this is what in fact was said, we can vote on that one paragraph. We don't have to delay the approval of the, of the minutes. We're not approving that because Superintendent Regalbudo has said that she will ask Lynette to review that and we will, and presumably at our next meeting, we will have that review and we'll know what it says.
The minute taker has the hand raised. I don't know if you want to.
Oh, minute taker?
Sorry, I just, sorry for interrupting. I just want to say that I don't remember writing it that way. That may have been the editing team updating what I put. So I will follow up with the editing team because I don't remember putting that, putting that statement.
Okay.
Okay. So it will be, if we approve the minutes now, we're voting on it, that the minutes as amended plus with Lynette researching the disputed sections, which will come back to us.
Point of order?
Yes, sir.
David Theriot has made a motion. He moved it.
It wasn't seconded.
That's what I was about to point out, it wasn't seconded. So that motion, so that motion is not, is not before the committee. Okay.
All right. So we're back to approving the minutes with the edits and with the edits as well of Lynette doing the necessary research. Okay, let's start over here. Sarah?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm abstaining.
Okay, Kyle?
Yes.
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 No.
Okay, so we have an abstain and a no, and I'm a yes. So it's eight yess, one abstain, and one no on that. All right, moving ahead. The school committee minutes, 1644.
Oh, you just did that one. You're on the approval of the public hearing.
I thought I did March 9th.
No, did you do B?
I thought I had, all right. No, I didn't do B. Okay, so approval of the public hearing minutes? We have a motion on that?
Moved, so moved to approve the minutes of the public hearing on March 2nd.
I seconded.
And we have a second from Kim. Any discussion? All right, seeing none. Vote will start. David?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Sorry, I jumped.
That's okay, got it.
We're doing March 2nd?
We're doing the public hearing.
Public hearing.
I'm abstaining.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay, so nine and one abstention. All right. All right, that takes us to, alrighty. Enrollment?
Nope. You have to go to approval of 1645.
Oh, 1645. How did I do it? Approval of minutes, I'm telling you, when you're in pain, you don't function very well. Or I don't. Minutes of meeting 1645. Do I have a motion on that?
Yes, so moved.
Second.
Okay, and we have a second. Any corrections, additions, questions from anyone? Okay, seeing none, I'll start with Jim.
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
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 David?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
And Dennis?
Yes.
Unanimous, okay. All right, with that, enrollment.
Enrollment is on 2D in your packet. And as of April 1, it was 610.
Do we have any questions for the superintendent? Yes, Carl?
Is there a breakdown of how, how we, how is the wrong word? But, but the reasons for the decline of five students?
If I know, I, you can see the breakdown of where people are going.
Right.
It's on the next page, but I didn't ask her ahead of time. I didn't see this ahead of time. So I didn't know the reasons. But I'm sure that the principals have had discussions with anybody who has moved, but I wouldn't put, I prefer not to put anybody on the spot and I can get that for you.
Okay.
To the grade levels.
Any further questions? All right, okay. All right, moving along. Do we have any miscellaneous correspondence?
I don't believe so.
Okay, do we have a student representative report?
We do.
Ah.
We did. She's still, yep, Jessica's there, great. Jessica's top left.
Okay, we'd love to hear from you, Jessica.
Hello, so currently I know that the prom planning committee has decided on May 19th for our prom, which is going to be held in a golf course in Pittsfield. I believe the tickets are running, I think there is still debate on the ticket prices from 65 to 75. And then NHS just finished their road cleanup on Route 7 and that was for two hours and it was a success. I know that the seniors have decided on their senior class trip, which will be held in Rhode Island on the beach. And I believe that's it for right now. I know that also the senior class did get their check from Baba Louise, but we haven't discussed about the amount yet. We just sent out a thank you. But we'll be discussing that next meeting. And then NHS will also be doing their Krispy Kreme fundraiser this upcoming month. And yeah, that's what we have for now.
Well, it was really wonderful seeing all the students involved in the cleanup. And I'm just going to make my usual plug. When we do anything like that, if students can be encouraged to wear Mount Everett T-shirt, Mount Everett something, so, you know, we know that it's not people doing detention duty from the local police. So that would be, not that I thought they would be mistaken for vagrants, but more that they should be recognized for being Mount Everett students. So if you could pass that along.
I have a question. If, I think it's obvious that if two Mount Everett students attend the prom as a couple, they each pay the cost, or maybe one of them pays the cost for two. Now, if a Mount Everett student invites a non-student, like their mom, to attend the prom.
That would be age limit violation, but that's just thrown in.
Maybe like a Waldorf student.
Right. It's, are.
They're charged the same.
Are they charged the same?
Yeah, the price of the ticket is the price of the ticket.
There's not a discount for a parent?
I don't know. Why would there be?
Little awkward there.
I think it's unlikely to happen, but who knows? Stranger things have happened, right?
Okay, do we have any other questions? All right, thank you very much. Do we have a student spotlight this evening?
We do.
Does it have anything to do with these wonderful front of, Front page of the Eagle? Front page of the Eagle and then your father made sure the rest of the world saw it.
All right, so we are here.
And he's not going to the prom.
I want it now.
Two tickets for you.
Yeah, you can demo it in a minute. So we're here to talk about the new drone team that we started here. You'll see it says REC, Aerial Drone Competition. So who's the REC? That's the Robotics Education and Competition Foundation. So they are the same company that organizes the VEX Robotics that we've done for a number of years and years. So this is another competition that they've put out there. They have several. So we have launched this one. We've been looking to launch, get this up in the air, this program, all these puns that you can make with drones. We've been trying to do this for about four years now and COVID kind of got in the way. And they're out of Dallas, so it sort of took off in the middle of the country and then with COVID and stuff kind of didn't get out this way very quickly. But it's finally here. Even this year, they were kind of back and forth as to whether they're going to be able to host an event or not. So I got an email like mid-February saying, all right, it's going to happen, March 18th. And I'm like, okay, let's go. So we kind of quickly formulated the team right after February break. We practiced for three weeks, three days a week for an hour each, each session and went to the competition. So I'll have these guys tell you a little bit about the game and then a little bit about how the drone works and what you're supposed to do. I have a video that we can show you quickly just so you have a better concept. It's kind of hard to get a full concept for the game right here. So first and foremost, let's talk about, I don't have any ping pong balls with us, but Nico, you want to talk about the ping pong ball portion of the, of the game? And you can come up here to the microphone. Come on up here.
You might have to, you might have to like run it.
There you go.
Yay. So there were these PVC pipes that were kind of shaped into like squares and there were a bunch of ping pong balls inside and you had to use the drone's propellers to get the ping pong balls out and then try and get them in these even bigger squares to get points.
Just the propellers?
Yes. I mean theoretically, you could push the balls with the drone, but that did not work.
So what skills did you have to use for that?
We had to figure out what was the best way to get the ping pong balls out of like the starting gate because if you like went right on top of them. Because if you like went right on top of them, half of them would go out. Half of them would go the other direction. They would get stuck. So you had to figure out that you had to go like back and forth in order to get all of the ping pong balls out.
That's cool.
All right. And then, so then there's a sort of a second half to the game. That's... The game is two minutes long. So that's a minute and 15 seconds. And the last 45 is called the end game. This game is called blackout. Just like the VEX robotics, they have a name for every game that sort of deals with the theme of the game or a certain special aspect of the game. So in this year's game, it's called blackout zone or blackout... You want to talk about the blackout zone and what you do there? Come on over here.
Can you introduce yourself first?
My name is Zertrill. Just going to raise...
You'll be fine.
I have no clue how to raise that.
You're fine.
I do. Blackout zone is essentially a... An area of the game where you have 45 seconds to complete landing on the boxes.
You have to go through here first, right?
Oh, yeah. You have to go through the hoops and then you have to land on the boxes. But you cannot see the boxes at all. There's a curtain.
Cool.
And you have a visual observer. Like say Nico would be a pilot and I would be a visual observer. I would direct him onto the boxes. And essentially, the big boxes are worth less points than the smaller ones. But even if you land inside the blackout zone, you will still gain points.
So I'm going to share my screen here to the Zoom world. And... I'm not going to bring the sound up because it'd just be a bunch of drones buzzing around and people screaming and yelling. But so Nico, you can talk a little about... This is you here, right? Or that's actually Wyatt doing the...
Yeah, that's Wyatt piloting.
But that's the clearing the starting lane, right?
Because you were going back and forth trying to get them all out. No, we missed one.
All right, so you can talk about there's a certain starting zone, right? To have to start your drone in a certain spot.
Pilots have to stay in that like red box over there. And you cannot move from that box.
Step closer to the mic. There you can step back here.
Yes, that's it. Just step closer.
All right, so there's a little bit more... You can... I think in a second, we're going to show the sort of back of the thing a little bit.
Yeah.
So there's your back and forth, right?
Yeah.
So here's some of the other goals that they have to get the balls to. There's goals in the back. There's goals in the front. So 10 points to clear your starting lane and then...
Which is the little PVC pipe where the ball started.
Yeah. And then talk about... You want to talk about blue versus red in the goals?
Yeah. So there were two teams. One made of blue or one blue team, one red team. Each team had two drones. In order to... See that red ball that's kind of like next to the PVC? If you got that one in there, you would own that goal and get, I think it was like five points.
I think it's 10 if you own the goal, yeah.
But if there was one red ball in there and two blue balls in the same goal, blue would own it and they would get 10 points. And then the white ball... Which the ref is blocking. Thank you, ref.
And then here's your blackout zone, right? So there, you want to talk about this a little bit?
Yeah, sure.
This is you over here.
Yep, if you look at that, I'm... Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
There's also an autonomous portion. I forgot this was going to come up next.
Oh, yeah.
That's Wyatt. He programmed the drone. So drone's going out under autopilot scenario. Pre-coded to go ahead and make these maneuvers. Clearing the starting lane again gets you some points. Here's where the archways come involved. That gets you some points. The landing pad will get you some points. So that's all code that he sent from his computer to do all that.
Where you landed.
Is there like a... Is there a... Is the code... Is that like a software that is used to sort of... You know, you have certain ways of programming it with the code? Or are you just like writing the code?
There's like... It's like a... It's a bit hard to explain. You... It's not really like you just write the code out. It's more of you're like, there are certain bits you can use in order to command the drone to do certain things.
Okay.
You can drag and drop.
Yeah. It's block-based. There is a Python option that they may graduate to as they get to high school. But it's right now it's a...
When they get to high school.
Yeah.
So it's a block-based thing for right now. assemble the blocks. You want the drone to do this for a certain amount of time or...
Right.
Fly to this height, that kind of thing.
What skills do you think you've developed as a result of this experience?
A lot of teamwork.
Teamwork. Just drone flying skills.
Yeah, so the REC Foundation, they're kind of... The concept with this is it's not as complex as the VEX robotics necessarily because they don't have to build the drone. In the robotics, they're building the robot and they're coding it. Here, this comes out of the box ready to fly. But that doesn't mean it's always works perfectly. You want to talk about some of the repair issues?
Oh, yeah, that's actually... A lot of the repair issues that happen are usually with the motors and how they will not spin. So usually what you do is you... Yeah. You replace... You have a few options you have. You could either take off the propeller and replace it. You could take off the motor and replace it. You... When you're doing that, you should also look for some stuff like dirt or debris. That could be... Or debris. I don't know how to say it. That could be... That could be forming in the drone. But mostly with... Most of the problems usually come from the motors or the propellers.
So you're talking about having to unscrew this lower body? Pull it all out, right? Now, what about the wires underneath? They're color-coded differently. Why was that? Remember why we said that?
Oh, yeah. Because of the... The propellers are diagonal to each other in the way that they spin. So the two fronts will spin a certain way and the two backs will spin another way to... So that if they were all spinning the same way, they would float a certain way. So that basically creates a balance with them.
You can make them pop or wrinkle depending upon which ones you get more information.
Two are spinning clockwise, two are spinning counterclockwise.
Are there any other schools in our area that compete in these things?
We are the first in the state. So we had... At the competition in Connecticut, there were about eight or nine Connecticut schools, a few Vermont schools. But we were the only one to compete for Massachusetts.
That's us.
So the kids did win the judges' award. They also came in second in the autonomous portion that you saw the video of there. So that has earned them an invitation to the East Regional Championship in West Virginia.
Go to Virginia!
In May. All right. So Nico, you want to give a quick little demonstration of how this thing works and takes off? How many other students? There's two other students right now on the team. So we have four this year, but it's going to grow. I know it will, so. Does any school community member would like a quick tutorial? Would you like to take the controls and have the kids guide you through it?
Yeah.
Come on up. It's getting late. Come on up.
Here, land it.
Land it.
We also mentioned that the game is blue versus red. You can show them that the... There's a little LED dome on these, on the drone. So you can't... There... It can go through the eight basic colors. But you do change it out from the blue to red. So you kind of have some idea what drone is yours once they get mixed up and moving around. Come on over here.
You're anticipating that you will have more students.
Totally incompetent. So you guys have to...
Oh, yeah.
I'm totally incompetent with things electronic.
Success always gets people's attention.
Okay, so this is the power button, obviously. These controls here are for trimming. So say a drone floats a certain way.
Maybe take... Maybe teach them to take off.
I'm just showing the controls before I take off. But so, I mean, these are your basic motions and whatnot. These are for trimming so that when you float... Like if you float up and it floats a certain direction, you can trim it in order... So it'll stay in a like, in a very...
Trust you.
Yeah.
Just have her take off and land on the box.
Okay. So if you have your finger on your... Right here.
Yeah.
Now what you'll do is if you short press it, you'll change the speed, which is S1, the slowest. But if you hold it, it'll start up.
Yep. So press and hold.
Ta-da!
It will hover on its own for a moment.
So now if you look at this button...
That goes high and low.
Down, and you can turn it.
And then this changes the direction.
So, yep.
Actually, maybe turn it just so it's facing that direction.
Oh, shit, stop. Excuse your language. Ah, Todd, make it stop!
Turn it around for her.
Yeah, make it turn.
All right.
I know. So now if you... There, that's too much. There!
All right, so then...
I'm just facing the boxes.
You can... So on your right thumb, you can bring it forward a little bit. Yep, that's good. And on your left thumb, you can bring it back down. All the way down before it can... There you go. You got the box.
Whoa!
Left thumb all the way down. Left thumb all the way down.
That is so much fun! Oh, my God!
So right thumb, real quick, the terms that we don't typically use, but we should, is right thumb is pitch, forward and backward. Pitch. Roll, left and right. And the spin is on your left thumb. That's your yaw, right? Pitch, roll, and yaw. Okay?
I think it's that and then down. See with some relationships with what you've done with underwater and all of the other...
This will be the sort of our secondary competition that we'll be offering six through 12. I did it with the middle school just to start because I think that's probably a great place for the... To start with and let these kids grow up into high school and continue with this. So we'll get bigger and more and more teams. This... The REC Foundation has said that this program is growing at 10 times the pace that their VEX robotics did. And the reason is that it's a very easy entry. This is meant to be more for that gamer kid that maybe is a little intimidated by the nuts and bolts of the big robot and doesn't... That isn't really ready for that. But hey, I can pick up a joystick and I can fly this thing. And that's really cool. So like I said, so the entry level is much, much easier. So, you know, there were 12 teams. There's 13 teams of the event back in March in Connecticut. It'll probably be, you know, 50 teams next year.
But how will it go beyond the joystick into the concepts that they're learning for career area?
Well, again, as I mentioned, you know, there's the teamwork aspects and all of that. There's the coding aspects. There's the repair. I mean, just pulling that thing apart. And so there's certainly, you know, technical elements to this. Whether they end up working in an industry that's... Part of the innovation pathway. You know, whether they end up working in a field that... With drone technology, who knows? But a lot of industries are being altered by drone technology in ways that we are starting to see, in ways that we maybe can't anticipate just yet. So they'll have a feeling of how that all works. Probably most drones that are going to be, you know, used out in the industry would be autonomous. But there'll still be... There's still going to be room for a lot of remote control stuff. You know, there was a story, goes back a couple of years now. It was in Baltimore. It was a organ transplant. They had to get one organ from one hospital to the other hospital. Gridlocked traffic. So what'd they do? They threw it on a drone, flew it across the city to the other hospital, onto the helicopter landing pad, and got the organ to where it needed to go. That's the world we're headed towards or in now.
Dennis?
Why do you think that we're the only one in the Commonwealth of Mass that does this?
Well, probably because it's very new. Like a very new... Yeah. A very new way of learning and probably hasn't been tested out by a lot of schools yet.
And you have Mr. Thompson.
Right.
I mean, that, you know...
Because it grew out of the VEX organization. That's, you know, I got to know it. There was an event, a PD event back in October in Connecticut. You know, we have done the underwater robots before. We did that through the CTEA, Connecticut Technology Engineering Educators Association. So I'm on their contact list. This kind of came out of them again. So I went down to the PD, got a free drone, that kind of stuff. So it's just kind of being in the know and having done this for a number of years in certain areas. You know, you just... You get information coming your way and you go, that's cool. We should start this.
David? In terms of looking forward to future competitions and events, is AI technology a part of the roadmap for the future of this sort of...
Yeah, definitely. VEX does offer a version of the same game that we played this year where the two robots are completely autonomous and are trying to communicate with one another to accomplish a task. So there's getting to those levels, yeah.
Is that something that you are planning to implement?
If I can, yes. I will have to... It's probably a big learning curve. But yeah, I think we would like to get there. I mean, that's obviously the future, so.
Is that tied into what you're doing with our kids?
Kids being able to get credits at UMass Amherst, their program?
UMass Amherst?
Yeah.
No. We have the Cisco Academy that we contracted.
Oh, okay.
And they have courses in coding and AI and stuff like that, yeah.
In terms of implementing an AI system so that the students can learn more about AI technology, are there resources that are necessary to make that possible? Or is that something you could do with the current resources you have for the robotics program?
Probably right now, at such a beginning level, we could probably do something with what we have, at least the entry level, and then kind of see where it goes from there. We are offering a course next year through a curriculum provider called Code HS. That is all an introduction to AI and stuff. So I think what we'll do is we'll certainly see how that coding class goes and see where we can bring it into this world. I mean, the reality is some of the coolness of this is the remote control. The kids want to have some of that power in their hands. They don't always want to necessarily code it, which I get. As I say to some... I didn't say it to you guys lately, but I say it to some people once in a while. once in a while. Even Luke Skywalker turned off his targeting computer to blow up the Death Star, right? So that happens. So, yeah, you know, they're going to want to code and they're going to want to fly. They're going to want to fly or drive the robot with their thumbs as well. But they're going to want to, you know, it's going to be more important that they learn the true coding aspects, which will continue to develop and develop, I'm sure.
Carl?
Are you and Wyatt siblings?
What's that?
Are these two siblings?
No, no.
They're not?
No.
But they're dressed similarly.
Yes, we just got our team t-shirts today with the eagle with the helicopter blades on the back, so the propeller blades.
Can we buy those shirts?
I didn't have enough to sell to the public. No, I'm sorry.
Well, maybe you should. It's a fundraising thing. Are you both middle schoolers?
Seventh grade.
What grade are you in?
Both of us are seventh grade.
You're both in seventh grade.
What's Tanya's? Tanya's seventh?
Can you turn around and get the back of the shirt?
There you go.
Nice.
I don't need to be in there.
And John, could I put you on the spot?
In terms of, has this, anything that you've heard at home, positive, negative?
No, I mean, I watched a little bit of the competition in Connecticut too. You know, it's just a great experience. The teamwork aspect is really cool and the technical knowledge that they're building is great. You know, there's many ways they can, you mentioned innovative pathways. There's a lot of things that can, different ways they can connect with different innovative pathways through this work. And as they build over the years, their knowledge and abilities, the sky's the limit, you know?
Literally.
Lots of puns.
I could throw it on all night.
And then we could look to see what, it says Simon's Rock, that maybe they could do a summer course.
Maybe, maybe. Maybe we could do a summer course for them.
Well, I hate to say we have a lot of other boring things to go through.
Chris, great work.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
Good for teaching me how to try to do it. You guys, that was really fun.
And I want you to know, people all over the county really know about our programs. So the word is out there, and all positive.
Awesome job.
Oh, yeah. Good.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ah.
Can't we stop here?
Nope, you're out of luck on that.
I make a motion.
Well done. All right. Do we have anyone in the public to comment? Okay. We did the business manager's report. All right, we're up to business with district member towns. We, the regional school district planning board, and if there, let's start with Lucy, who has joined us to give us a bit of an update and to answer questions.
Thanks, Bonnie. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Great. Well, good evening, everyone. Beautiful day today. In terms of an update, we've made a lot of progress working through the provisions of the eight-town regional agreement since I was last here, which I think was about a month ago. With the exception of the assessment methodologies, the board has reached agreement on pretty much all of the substantive provisions of an eight-town agreement. Most recently, we have agreed on the provisions that lay out the detailed process and the supermajority vote that would be required before any school could be closed. And we have reached agreement on provisions that provide for in-trad district choice, so choice within the district, within the schools of the district, as opposed to inter-district choice. So we understood that those two sets of provisions were of particular importance to the parents of the Berkshire Regional School District and the Berkshire Hills Regional School District. So I'm happy to report that the board reached agreement on how those provisions would work. I want to add that Desi has regularly been reviewing our draft regional agreement, the draft of the regional agreement as we generate them. They've been offering suggestions for clarification of language, expansion of language. Happy to report that they have not identified any red flags. They think we're doing very well working through those provisions. On the assessment methodologies, which is really the last substantive topic that needs to be written into this draft of the regional agreement, at our last board meeting, which was on Tuesday, Jake Everline, who's our project manager, and Lizzie Palmer, who's the chair of our finance subcommittee, and as you know, I'm Sheffield's fourth board member, gave a full presentation on the recommendation that has been made by our finance subcommittee on how to assess operating costs, how to assess the cost for a new high school, and how to assess other capital costs. So those three buckets of assessments. Those who aren't able to attend the presentation, I really encourage you to listen to the recording, which I can send you. If you shoot me an email or if you shoot one of your representatives an email, we can get that to you. The presentation is about an hour. It's very comprehensive. I thought it was very well done. It's a 50-wide presentation with very clear and illuminating visual depictions of how this is all going to work. And it provides an excellent outline of the recommendation and how it would work based on certain detailed projections done by our public school finance expert, Matthew Ebron. So we are, having had begun our board deliberation, our full board deliberation on that finance subcommittee recommendation, those are going to begin at our next board meeting, which is May 3rd. So I invite you all to attend. Before I ask you for whatever questions you have, I did want to say a word about the vote of the finance subcommittee. As is true with all of our subcommittees and with our full board, there are more voting members from the five Southern Berkshire towns than there are from the three Berkshire Hills towns. And that's because of the way our board is constituted by statute. There are three representatives from each of the eight towns. So that means there are 15 representatives from the five Southern Berkshire towns, and there are nine representatives from the three Berkshire Hills towns. So Southern Berkshire has sort of an overweight in terms of voting power on our board and at the subcommittee level as well. The vote of the five voting members of the finance subcommittee on the recommendation that was brought forward, three of whom come from Southern Berkshire towns and two of whom come from Berkshire Hills towns, was unanimous in favor of the recommendation. But because this was such an important issue, the chair, the subcommittee, the dean, decided to poll all of the board members, all of the planning board members who had been attending those finance subcommittee meetings, including the alternates on the finance subcommittee and the ex officio members, including you. So there were actually 10 who voted on the recommendation at the finance subcommittee level. And the vote of that 10 was nine in favor and one against. And of the nine who were in favor, five were representatives of the Southern Berkshire towns and four were representatives from the Berkshire Hills towns. So all the Berkshire Hills town representatives voted in favor, and five of the six Southern Berkshire representatives voted in favor. Four total of nine out of 10. And I mention that because these are several new complex issues. The assessment methodology questions are very complex. There are many different perspectives and interests being represented on our board. And I think it's pretty remarkable that, given the complexity of these issues and the varying perspectives and interests of the board members from eight different towns, we were able to get a nine out of 10 regardless. So I really applaud the dean and the finance subcommittee for that work. We do have deliberation ahead on the recommendation, but I am optimistic that we are going to get agreement on this last piece of at least the regional agreement puzzle. We still have to have a vote on the overall recommendation, but getting this regional agreement done and working through all these provisions has been a big task, a difficult task, and I think I can report that we're doing quite well. So with that, I'd like to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. By raising your hand if you have a question? I have a question. About five minutes ago, you said something related, Lucy, to, I think, school closures, how that would be done?
Yes. If you want me to talk through that?
If you would, because that's come up here a number of times, and I think to have a full explanation would benefit the school committee.
Sure, sure. I think I touched on this the last time I was here, but I'm not sure we had voted on it yet, so I'll go through it again. And what we did was, we took provisions from both of the regional agreements for the two districts, and we combined them to make this process and procedure as robust as we possibly could. So that section lays out a protocol that needs to be followed before we even get to a vote on a possible school closure. And that protocol requires a feasibility study that is conducted at least 10 months in advance of any proposed school closing. That includes an assessment of the educational impact on students. It requires a fiscal analysis to determine the impact of any such school closing on the regional budget and on individual assessments to member town. It requires a review and recommendation pertaining to grade span scheme and how reassignment of students would occur. It requires a review of population trends to determine the long-term impact of any proposed school closing. It requires a meeting with a select board of the member town in which the school being studied for closing is located. It requires two separate public hearings to be held at least seven days apart, both of which have to be held at least 14 days before a vote by the committee. And at least one of those public hearings is to be held in the member town in which the subject school would be closed. And those of you who have studied your own regional agreement will recognize that many of these provisions are based into your agreement, but there's more here, actually, than is in your agreement. And then after all that happens, there needs to be a vote by the school committee, and it's got to be at least a two-thirds vote of the school committee. If some whole majority is not enough. And the two-thirds vote has to include representatives resident in at least six of the eight towns. And the idea behind that is that the two towns that have the majority members on the school committee, Ray Barrington and Sheffield, would not, with, for example, one or two other towns, be able to carry the day on a school closure. You would need a affirmative vote from representatives from at least six of the eight towns. And that was an important provision, I think to you, Bonnie, and Susan Smith and others. So that's included in the board. And then after that vote, if there is an affirmative vote of those two thirds, those two members from at least six of the eight towns, it goes to town vote. And the town vote would require that at least six of the eight towns vote in favor of a school closure by a majority vote. So that's the way it works.
Okay.
Pass that, supermajority at the school committee level, and then on to town vote with at least six of the eight towns voting in favor of that.
Great. David?
The investigation phase of the efforts regarding closure, would that be done by a special subcommittee? Or would that have to be done by the whole committee?
I'm sorry, I missed the first part of that question. The sound isn't that great for you. But I think the question was, the process, the protocol that I outlined, does that have to be done by the full school committee or by the subcommittee in that way?
Basically, yes.
Who would be conducting that investigation?
Say your mind.
Who would be conducting that investigation?
So I would expect that the school committee would engage consultants to do a feasibility study and a fiscal analysis, and that report would then be presented to the school committee for its review. That would be my expectation.
Okay.
If the school committee could decide they want to do the feasibility study themselves, I just think that's an awful lot of work to put on volunteer school committee members.
Okay, do we have other questions? All right. Well, saying none, Lucy, thank you for the information, your time. And you know that, you know, we've got a lot of people concerned about it, and you'll see that we bring up a lot of the same issues again and again. But I think you heard some of them at our meeting on Tuesday. So, but thank you for coming and giving us this information.
Yeah, my pleasure. And if anyone has any follow-up questions, shoot me an email. You can ask questions on the website. And please, I encourage you to come to our next board meeting. We're going to be deliberating on the assessment methodology.
And the current draft, that's not posted on the website, is it?
No.
Okay.
If, I mean, if someone wants it, I'm happy to send it to them.
Okay, that's what I want.
It changes, you know, every couple of weeks. So now we haven't been posting it.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right. My pleasure. Thank you all.
Yep. Enjoy the evening. Okay. Anyone who's serving on the regional planning board from our towns have any comments to make?
No, it's under the meeting.
Oh.
It's under the meeting on Tuesday.
Okay. Yep. Carl? No. Kim?
I'll abstain this evening because I'm moving things ahead.
Okay. All right. And I will as well. I think a couple of the issues will come up later. While we have the... Right, okay. All right, moving along. Chairman's report, really quickly, the workshop with Dorothy. We've narrowed it down to Tuesdays or Wednesdays evening. Can, is there anyone who cannot make it somewhere, we're going to try to do it, like maybe in the back room with the frog or whatever, by 5:30? You can't make 5:30?
No, Wednesdays and Tuesdays are tricky.
Okay. You have a problem?
5:30 is not necessarily impossible for me, but would be very difficult. If possible, I would recommend 6:00 PM.
Okay, 6:00 PM would take care of both of you. All right.
And you too.
And you too. All right. So that's all I'm going to do. Thank you all for eventually getting back to me. I know you're at a conference, I think it's the third week in May, and I didn't want to do the first week in May because we have something else going on, our budgets. So there are six dates that I gave her, and I'm waiting to hear from her on that. So thank you very much.
Yeah, well, yep. Okay, I was just wondering if we have, if we should move, ask to move the overnight field trip because Stephanie's waiting.
Oh, that's, all right. Why don't we do that? Because we have a great superintendent's report. So why don't we, if there, if I see no objections, we'll move the approval of the trips next. I don't, all I see is nods to the affirmative. Therefore, let's get the approval of, onto new business, approval of overnight field trip to New York City National Art Honors Society students, May 23rd and 24th. Stephanie, would you like to speak to that?
Sure, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, great. Hi, I'm sorry that I arrived a little bit late today. Something came up. But I'm glad that I made it, and I'm glad to present this trip opportunity. It's going to be an overnight trip to New York City for National Art Honors Society. It's a newly-formed group, already formed. We had been agreed on the past, but since COVID, we're trying to revamp it. We have a lot of, yeah, we have a lot of new students interested, and I wanted to kick off the start of the group with a trip that would really kind of immerse them in art, in the art culture of the city and in general, art experiences that might inspire them. We're also going to visit the Fashion Institute of Technology at FIT.
Great.
And attempt to go to a couple of exhibits in galleries that, you know, that might be lesser kind of popular. But yeah, it's going to be super fun. They're going to be, I think, really excited about what they see and experience, and we're going to bring back some enthusiasm for completing our mission at the school.
I am so happy you did it because when we had the Honors Society before, you opened up the eyes of so many of our students.
Thank you.
To this. And I have a friend who I think is still on the board of FIT. So if you wanted him, if you wanted him to speak to our students, I'm sure I could arrange it.
Oh, my God, thank you. Yeah. I'm arranging for a campus tour, but apart from that, there's nothing else arranged. Yeah, that same day, we're also going to visit the Met and potentially the MoMA. But we might push the MoMA to the next day after we try to visit the Yaya Kusama exhibit that's just opening.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, at the David Warner Gallery. But that's going to be the kind of thing, a real New York experience. They're going to wait online and really try to get into this exhibit, which will be another one of those Infinity Rooms type experiences. So I'm so happy. Yeah. And what's super cool is I'm teaching about Yaya Kusama in one of my classes right now. So it's like a good time in the curriculum. Yeah, it'll just be really fun.
Great. Do we have any issue at all in terms of students being able to afford this? Do we have any issue at all in terms of students being able to afford this? How did I miss that?
No, because I received an Eagle Fund grant to cover most of the cost of this.
Well done. Here it is. That's great. Do we have any other questions for Stephanie? All right, I will take a motion to approve this trip. That was Carl. We have a second, Jim? Okay. Any further discussion?
A very minor point. Stephanie, is there a reason that the group is departing from the Brewster Station and returning to the Southeast Station?
Those are one and the same.
No, they're not.
So Brewster or Southeast.
No, not true.
Not true.
Not true. Southeast used to be known as Brewster North. It's now Southeast. Brewster is a separate station.
Yeah.
That's why I asked the question.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Well, it's to Southeast. Southeast to Southeast.
Okay.
The desolate one.
Oh, but it's so convenient because all the, you discussed, like, you've got.
Okay, okay. For the sake of time.
Trade every hour. Why do I know this?
Any other questions for Stephanie? In which case, let's take a vote. David?
Aye.
Okay. Nancy?
Yes.
Okay. Moving along, Dennis?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
My good friend here, Mr. Taki? Yes?
Yes.
Oh, I'm saying yes for you.
Yes.
And Sarah and Bonnie, enthusiastic yes. You have unanimous approval. I love that you're doing it.
Thank you so much. The kids are going to have a great time, and I can't wait to share what we learned back with you again.
Take pictures.
Wonderful.
Oh, yeah, lots of pictures.
Yeah, where you can.
Lots of pictures. And now we have the.
REC trip.
Yes.
Yeah, so we have.
Going to the wilds of West Virginia.
Where'd those kids go? I don't know if they're going to stick around for this. So I mentioned in the presentation before, invitation to the REC East Regional Championship. It's in West Virginia. Fairmont State University is the host. So it's actually not too bad of a trip. It's probably like a little over an hour stop at Pittsburgh. It's just over the Pennsylvania line. So it's a two-day tournament, all day Friday, all day Saturday, 60 schools. Obviously, we'd be the only one from Massachusetts because we don't have anyone doing this, but most of the schools are West Virginia, Pennsylvania, Tennessee, that kind of thing. But we would be joining those 60 schools, 59 other schools, to compete for that championship. We would stay, drive down Thursday, spend the night there. It's basically all day, Friday, Saturday, drive back Sunday.
And the question of, oh, the Innovation Pathway Grant.
Yes.
Wonderful.
Yeah, we'll pull some money from there, yeah.
Fantastic. Wonderful.
Move to approve the trip.
Second. Okay. And our, second, any questions for Chris? Seeing none, let's go this way. Sarah? Kim?
Yes.
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 And an enthusiastic yes. Thank you so much for doing this.
Oh, gosh.
I love it. We all do. Okay.
I'm going to be proud.
All right. Do you want to go back to your superintendent's report? Superintendent notice.
Depends on the day. Sometimes it feels like, sure, that's fine.
Yes, sir.
Can we take a five-minute break so we can go to that? This looks like it's going to go on for a while.
We, if you've got to go, go ahead. We'll, we're not breaking because it's holding us. We've had too many issues. Just go do what you've got to do.
As I was told, we're not voting.
Right. We're not voting. Yeah, you won't miss a vote.
Yes. And then I'll go after you and then we'll just.
Okay. Superintendent's report.
Sure. So I mailed you a written copy, just in case you missed all this really exciting stuff that I'm going to share, but you don't have to. I'm just going to present straight out for today. So the House Ways and Means Budget was released yesterday, and I'm happy to say a lot of the components are moving in the right direction for us. It's not director, direction, is what it says in my report. So the, a couple of the highlights, the minimum per pupil aid went from $30 to $60. So you can buy two sweaters, not one, per student. The regional transportation reimbursement, I have not ever seen this in my 18 years of doing education work, is at 100% in this budget. I actually don't expect it to stay, but it is at 100%, up from 90 in the governor's budget. The Universal School Lunch Program was fully funded with language included to make it a permanent mandate, which is one of the things we advocated for pretty heavily. Circuit Breaker, which is our special ed reimbursement financing or support, I should say, went up by 2.25 million. The Rural Aid, which is something you'll see a little later that some of us have been advocating very hard for, is up from 7.5 million in the governor's budget to 10 million. To have it be fully funded, it should be around 60, 61 million. So right direction, not nearly where we need it to be. Some things that are notable in the inflation factor is still capped at 4.5% when inflation's actually 9.1%. So we're absorbing that, and the regionalization grant remains at zero. The budget mailer is just about completed. We, that'll be talked about with our community outreach group, but I'd just like to remind everybody that the goal of this mailer is that we put a document in everybody's hands, whether they have students in the district or not, so that people know how their taxpayer funding is being invested in the schools. It should arrive in people's mailboxes the week before the first town meeting, so we found it to be very helpful and informative for the public. I attached a document to the written report, but you, the school committee, has gotten it before. So the document is the summary of all the information that happened at the community conversation that we had back in February of 20, February 7th of 2023. And so I, you know, I just want you to know that it's in your inboxes again. It was presented at the Community Outreach Committee last night, therefore it's a public document, and so I wanted to make sure everybody had it. I will, I know that everybody knows I'm going to let our early college coordinator and, and talk about the innovation pathways, but I did put a note in here about it. I had an opportunity to testify with my colleagues at the Berkshire County Superintendent's Roundtable in front of the Berkshire County delegation a couple of weeks ago. I was part of the team that advocated for additional rural aid funding. We broke the presentation into three areas. It was around the challenges, the utilization of the funds, and the need and asks that we had for the delegation. I, I talked about, I spoke specifically about our district, gave them our demographics, our enrollment. I talked about our hold harmless status and about how the Student Opportunities Act is very helpful for our urban colleagues, but has not had any effect on funding for rural, regional school districts. We talked about the fact that often we don't qualify for grant funding and, and also that we didn't qualify for rural aid until two years ago, and to date, we've received 70,000 in the first year and 101,000 in the second year. We discussed the inequities in that formula. As my colleague who was presenting with me on rural aid in central Berkshire, they got about a little under $600,000, where we're getting 70 or 100,000. Same with Berkshire Hills next to us. So the delegation, and I believe Mr. Pignotelli noted, that it doesn't, it seems like another formula that isn't quite working, and so we want to work on that. We discussed that it's just substantially more expensive to educate students in rural areas. On average, it's about 17% higher. That's due to the lack of services, so we're more expensive. We either have to create in-house programming, or we're sending kids significant differences to meet their needs, at significant distances, to meet their needs. We talked about the lack of affordable housing and inability to attract and keep staff. We had, that had happened to us with two of our own quite recently. We reiterated the challenges of regional transportation, which they're making a liar out of me right now, but we did talk about that that day. We talked about how we've become professional grant writers as well as administrative staff, trying to offset costs for any programming needs that our districts might have. And we just basically said that we can't keep asking lean staffs to do more with less, reduce, share, combine, become more efficient, because the issue's still the same. We're not funded adequately for the area that we live and work in, so, and it's not equitable to, to run an educational program as, you know, with other districts across the Commonwealth. And that investing in rural districts is an investment in students and faculty and staff, which in turn is an investment in the economy and is imperative for sustainability. I made a recommendation last night. I think we should consider inviting the Berkshire delegation. There were several of them who hadn't been to our schools, some are newer. The Secretary of Education, which is Patrick Tutwiler, who was a former superintendent. I will say that he, we had posted our radio interview with our students in our early college program, and he retweeted it across the entire state and quoted some of our students and the benefits of early college, which I think was pretty exciting, and the commissioner, and show them what it is to be out here. I don't think any of them have been out here in five years, maybe. So I really feel like we should make the extension and let them see what we're doing with the resources we have and what, how important it would be for them to, to see that. So that's all I have tonight. You'll see, those documents are attached. I even gave you the, the slides that we used when we gave our presentation.
Questions for Beth? Carl?
A minor clarification. The superintendent mentioned the House Ways and Means Committee. I think for purposes of the minutes, it should be, we should clarify that that's the Massachusetts House of Representatives Ways and Means Committee, not US Congress.
Yeah, I'm not sure, but great. Feel free. I just, it's such a long title, but if you would like to make that clarification, wonderful. Yes. You are correct.
What was the reception to what you folks were presented?
They were very receptive. I will say, a comment that I think was well-taken, but a little bit shocking, well, and not, we're underrepresented in general, right? They've, they've redistricted, so we have even less than we've had before. I will say that, I'm trying to remember the gentleman's name. Is it Barrett? Does that right?
Barrett?
Yeah. Yes. So said two things. He said that, you know, rural and, and regional districts are on the tongue. Like, we have, we have an audience, many of us in Berkshire County for the first time. We have a superintendent who's going to be the head of the Mass Association of School Superintendents. Many of us are on executive committees. So there is a presence, but there isn't as many of us. So they need more advocacy. They're asking that more people, more of our organizations even get in front of people because that's how the Student Opportunities Act got passed, which is benefiting urbans, but it's not, it's not beneficial in that, you know, they were saying the same thing. We need to get people out here. There are people who don't know anything past 495, and they think that, that there's less. They haven't been out here. They would really encourage that we do those things, and they would like to shore themselves. So I just think, they were very receptive, very responsive. It's just that there's not as many of us, so we need to work on that.
And we, I think we really should. I remember the year that Steve Bannon got the, I think it was the Lifetime Award, one of the, that award that they give at MASC.
Oh, yeah.
And he had nobody to sit with, so we invited him over to our table, and really, we, we need to show up throughout. And I know Nancy, you said, I have kind of.
I'll address that in just a bit.
Right.
Exactly along those lines, yeah.
But it's, it's very important. I know, Carl, you've gone out to a number of events over the years, but they don't, you know, they don't know us.
And one question I have regarding that, that is, some of it all, you know, we've discussed last night, and I'll address it in a bit, but I'm wondering how much, how much of a missing public voice, like if, if the public, people from the county are invited to do, to talk to our legislators and talk to committees and stuff like that? I mean, is that, like, when hearings happen and stuff like that? That was our ticket.
You mean, you're speaking like the Day on the Hill?
Something like Day on the Hill, but, you know, a lot of us can't make Day on the Hill, right? But are there other, you know, I'm wondering if there are other times it's really just Day on the Hill.
Yeah, right. So you're going to have to go through letter-writing campaigns or, you know.
Right, sure.
Or take the opportunity to host something and give the public the opportunity to address.
I remember when we hosted the Southern Berkshire Chamber here, and our culinary program did all of the cooking. They got to go around and see what was going in. So I think you, you know, it's, it's a way, you have to put work into it, and I know Smitty has told us that.
So has John Barrett. I mean, speaking, you know, John Barrett's very strong on that, yeah.
So it's going to be, in all our spare time, another job. But I'm so glad you were able to, to make that presentation.
And, and they all showed up, which I thought was really.
Really?
Yeah. Because I was actually, I'm also, as you know, on the Board of Directors of MARS, so the Mass Association of Regional Schools. So that one was at nine o'clock. So I was doing that one in the car while I was driving to present at the 11 o'clock. But the, that one is also well-attended, just a different area of legislative representatives, and they had a lot of them, but they were struggling. One of them had a sick kid. It was terrible. I felt very bad. But just trying to, we had all of our delegation there, and that was, so it was really a great opportunity.
Dennis?
If I could make a suggestion, one of the things that we should do as individuals is work with our town officers, because there are a lot of meetings that are held here. I was just at one up in, just.
Pittsfield?
Well, not in Pittsfield, it didn't even go up there. You know, the town on the way to Pittsfield.
Picture on everyone.
And basically, where, where all of our local representatives and senators were there, you know, and, and basically, there, there were some of the local, of your local, from your town, you know, select board members and others that were there at the same event, you know? And that's a good way to kind of, you know, get engaged and make some of this stuff happen, you know? In my personal opinion.
I think that's a very good point, because one of the things that happens now, like this woman, Renee Wood.
Is that the energy number?
You know her?
Yes, I know her pretty well.
She, there are a number of times where she said, Bonnie, I think the school committee should be at this, or do you want me to come and speak related to that? So I think it's important that we do become closer buddies with our elected officials. It's a good point. Our challenge of.
Certainly our business, business.
And definitely get the, you know, the regional business group out here again, because I know that when New Marlboro invited Maureen Healy in her previous existence, and they were talking about the roads and the conditions, so Nat Yehalem, who was head of the Select Board of the Point, took her out in his car, and he picked some of the choice roads, but she could not believe what rural means when, you know, in our district. So, yeah, it behooves. So, yeah, it behooves us to take this action.
I think we need to invite Smitty to Southfield Store for some coffee.
Because you can't...
Send him and get a hold of him.
Well, no, 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 you can't get to Southfield at the moment.
Why not?
There's no bridge.
Yeah.
They finally took it out. It's only taken eighteen...
You can go around through, come up through Connecticut to get there, right?
Yeah, well, yeah, or through, yeah, yeah.
You wanna make it easy. Whatever we do, let's get it.
Oh, wow. I'm glad you told me that, 'cause I said to someone, oh, I'll meet you at the Southfield store, I guess. All right.
You can get there. You just go. He's great.
Okay.
I'll continue.
All right.
Hands are raised.
Okay. David?
To Nancy's point, I just have a question relative to that. If the bridge is out, how do the students get here?
They go around through Lumbercross Road. They have it, they have it frigged out, so...
They have a drone.
They keep hopping around.
Use their jetpack.
So it's all, it's the biggest, the biggest, the biggest concern is actually emergency services getting out of the town, so.
So it's gonna be fast, they say.
Yeah, it is.
But it's only taken eighteen years. This is totally off-topic, so let's get back to where we're going.
Okay, so let's go back on topic. All right. Anything else for Beth? All right, moving quickly along, curriculum and professional development, my dear.
Okay, well, I will be brief. I just wanted to keep you up to date on the continued many professional development and coaching opportunities that we have provided to the staff throughout the district. During our last half-day PD, we were able to provide CPR and first aid to all our pre-K staff.
Wow.
And we're going to continue providing that course on future half-day PDs to various other staff throughout the district. We continue to have training and coaching provided for math, K to eight, and we are fortunate that we are able to do it not only on our PD days, the half-days that we have, but we're doing a lot of it during the day, so that teachers have the opportunity with these skilled coaches to be observed and get feedback that is non-evaluative, as well as to be able to watch expert teachers teach the lessons. So I, all the staff has been very appreciative of that time. And we are in the process of planning our PD for the summer and next year, and purchasing our new curriculums, which I will present on once we are positive of what it's gonna be. But every single bit of this is thanks to the very many grants that we write.
That's what's so incredible.
Yeah, so we've been very fortunate to have a lot of success with our grant writing, and it's covering everything.
Well, it's incredible, because when I look at the various towns and what's in legal about assessments, we are once again low compared to others, because the work that you guys do. So I think I could say thank you on behalf of the school committee, to your administrative team. It really makes a difference. And when we know this about the impact, particularly in math, 'cause you had some good results in the fall.
Yes.
What the fall...
So I think we'll probably wait to see the end of the year at this point. But so far, everything is trending up. We're seeing great growth. So I think we'll wait, and at the end of the year, once we have the end-of-year assessments, we'll go over that.
Okay. Thank you so much. Sandy?
Hi, good evening, everybody. I'm sorry I'm not there. I had to multitask tonight. But I want you to know that Owl works great. We hear everything, see you really well. Want to fill you in that summer school? We've been reaching out to families, and currently we have invited about eighty students, and we've been hearing back from them, doing that planning and working toward the start date, which is actually June 26th. So only about two and a half months away, so we're working on that. I was looking at our pre-kindergarten numbers today. We have already almost fifty students signed up for next year, which is pretty amazing for April. So looking forward to our continued growth in our pre-kindergarten program. And I also wanted just to mention another grant that we've been working on as an administrative team, which is the Safe and Supportive Schools Grant, which coincides with our Social Emotional Learning and Mental Health Grant. And it's something that we're looking at across the district, and how we can make some really pointed changes as we're looking at what we need. And this will kind of guide us. We're using a tool to look at what our primary need areas are across six target, target spots, and we're working on that right now. And it does coincide, like I said, with the Social Emotional Learning and Mental Health Grant, and they've not promised, but they have indicated that we would be candidates for more funds next year. So we're really looking at that closely, and how we can continue to grow our programs.
Correct. Sandy, do you, how do you let the families know about this initiative?
The Safe and Supportive Schools?
Yes.
Okay, so that was something we were just talking about yesterday when we were meeting. We will be talking about how we can either send out a survey or have focus groups to get the information out to families and get their input along with students as well.
Good.
We're only, we're only in the assessment phase, so we, you know, we're doing the preliminary assessment, and then it'll lead you to where you're gonna do your, your more in-depth focus as the beginning point and create your action plan. And there'll be feedback points all along that way.
Good. Again, I just wanna note, after we had the problem on February 7th with the Owl that we thought, you know, had been so perfect, Chris, I guess you did the investigation, and we've got a new and improved Owl? An eagle, an eagle version of the Owl?
It's very sensitive, so be careful about whispering under your breath.
Uh-oh. Okay. All right. So we can now move to the academic calendar with those couple of changes.
So the calendar in your packet is, I believe, is pretty much the same as what we looked at. I went back and met with the SBREA president. I think we made one move, which was moving the conference date back a little bit later in, for elementary conferences, 'cause that's what, a request from the staff, and all the rest of it was fine. So this is, this is what we have, and I would love to get it approved, 'cause I like to give families plenty of notice for planning as soon as possible.
I will take a motion to approve the calendar as revised.
So moved.
Okay, so that's Dennis and Jim. Any discussion? And Lynette let us know, you know, she sent us a note with the two changes. All right, see, no discussion. We'll start, David?
Yes.
Okay. Nancy?
Yes.
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 Kim?
Yeah.
Sarah? And me, yes. Okay, unanimous. That was an easy one.
I'll take those.
Mm-hmm. Okay, next on our list is early college.
Internship.
Lindy is here?
She is.
You're here. Come.
Are you okay to go?
Oh, sure. I was gonna stand up in front of everybody.
Isn't that great? Yeah, and you can have the microphone.
Well, you're always dressed beautifully. Best job ever. And she has her Mount Everett training.
So I think, yeah.
Can Sharon, you guys hear?
Oh, yeah, can the people, the Owl people can hear me? Great. Hold on, we're just pulling up a, over, over in slide, show them. Okay, so, big news tonight is we received our Innovation Pathways designation as a school district. So I put together a bit of a timeline. Back in October, we submitted our planning grant application. The end of October, we submitted the first part of our application. I think that was maybe even submitted during school committee meeting. There was a little bit of concern from the Pathways Review Committee that the district was too small, and so I wrote them back and said, you can't do that. That's not fair. We're a school district, and our students really matter, and this designation matters because we're doing really good work here. And they said, okay, you can continue to the second round. So then, in the meantime, we received their planning grant funds, which were $25,000 for planning purposes, and that money was meant to be used for, for programming as well for this year. In February, we submitted application Part B. We had an interview with Desi in March. And March 23rd, we got our official designation letter, and that means students are going to enter, start entering the program for next year. Next slide. So this program is about connecting students to high-demand careers. So this is all about actual workforce blueprints, regional, and it's about stimulating the Massachusetts economy, which works out really well for students, because that means they're getting programming and lessons and activities that put them in a place for finding meaningful work when they graduate. And a lot of business owners are really happy about this, too, because there's a lot of workforce shortages. So it's also, I think it's a really great program for support purposes, not only grant support. So designation makes the school district eligible for continued grant funding, but it also means that we get operational support from the Pathways team at the state as well. So a lot more connections throughout the state from businesses. Yes, question?
If you'll take a question.
Sure.
Just the top line up there, who determines what the demand careers are?
That's a good question.
For example, around here, people will tell you, we don't have any electricians.
Right. So, right, so this is, there are six or seven different categories that the state decided. So the state worked across each region of Massachusetts to determine in-demand careers, but with an eye toward the future. So students aren't learning skills that won't be applicable in, you know, before they're halfway through their career. So that means an emphasis on a lot of technology, because electricians, plumbers, car mechanics, you really can't do those jobs without understanding some computer componentry at this point. And so that's where this program really comes in. So the designation signifies alignment with the Massachusetts Office of College Career and Technical Education, and I just listed their guiding principles up there. I think, I don't expect any disagreement with those guiding principles, but that's really what they're all about. There's a lot of emphasis on that. I attended a workshop about equitable access just last week.
So we have, they picked two areas?
Yep. Oh, next slide.
For us?
So our two industry sectors out of the six that we're starting with, advanced manufacturing and information technology.
That's great.
And the reason we picked those is because we already do them well here at this district. We're starting from a place of real strength. We didn't have to add technical programming to meet the designation criteria. We already had it. And so that means starting, this program means starting in eighth or ninth grade, so that means we're recruiting, sorry, we're recruiting eighth and ninth graders to start the program in ninth or 10th grade. And that means students will essentially sign up. Other school districts, they made a big deal about an application process. We can serve any, we can serve 100% of our students in this program if we wanted to. I don't expect 100% of our students to want to pursue a technical career path, but it's really open to everyone. Anyone with a technical interest is invited, and that means everyone.
How are they being given an orientation towards this program?
Oh, that is, I have about 100 different answers for that question, starting with presentations made in middle-school technology classrooms. The long-term vision is to have the high school students making the presentations to the younger students, to really connect the dots for them. Step-up night for, for students entering high school, so parents and students will get some information about it. I put on here, we have, our high school students are actually designing our program materials. So the high school digital marketing and graphic design class is up to date on this program, because they've been helping me put together a brochure and a signup form, so they're gonna help me promote it. But I have, there's a lot of different ways I'd like to make sure we, we do outreach.
Do you think also, I mean, we need to do something with bringing industry in? 'Cause like, the first thing we hear from Kim, I need an electrician.
Right.
No, carpentry.
Carpentry? But you said, but you said electrician before.
Well, no, what I'm saying is we're hiring.
Any electricians? There's not many electricians.
Yeah, so, to answer your question, yes. Bringing in industry professionals is a big part of this. And so that's meant to happen many times per year, especially with the Innovation Pathways students, but also with students who are taking our technology courses.
Lindy?
Yeah.
The Innovation Pathways program, is that preparing students to go out to the workforce immediately after high school, or is it a college prep program?
It's, it's either or. It's not specific. So right now, where I see a lot of, well, let me take a few steps back. So program requirements, in order for students to complete their Innovation Pathways programming, they have to take a minimum of two technical courses and a minimum of two advanced courses, and that means AP or college courses. And we expect those students to be taking college courses while they're in high school, thanks to the early college program. And so my expectation is that they're, they're going to be pursuing what we call professional technical certifications. So that could mean anything from an OSHA certification for workplace safety, a Python programming certificate, to say that you are at a professional level for a certain programming language. We offer many at this point. But in some cases, these really high-demand careers, they don't require a degree, but maybe one or two college classes could really help. So it's setting students up so that they would find success in the workplace immediately or go to college. It really depends on what the student wants to do.
Well, given the fact, Beth, when you designed the vision, not you, when you brought a team together to come up with a vision, what was that, four years ago? It's like things are coming together. And don't anybody ever say we're too small.
We don't allow it.
We don't allow it.
I don't, oh, so the last piece is internships. Internships are a big part of this program. Our first business partner is Plaskalite, so very close by. They agreed to host our interns for both of those industry sectors, so that means our students will be onsite, you know, maybe a year or two away, because again, the program starts with ninth and 10th graders, and I expect this internship to take place during 11th or 12th grade. But we're going to be doing some field trips and bring them in to talk to students before then. Any other questions? I think I'm gonna leave it there tonight, not talk about early college. Wait till next time to talk about early college.
We'll wait with bated breath.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
And it's so wonderful, again, having you here.
Great work, thank you.
And we don't wanna lose everybody, so moving along to the solar project, we need to vote.
Well, God, do you wanna talk about the committee, or do you want me to just? There's, there's three slides. Did you, did we get those?
Yeah.
Do you want me to just talk about this?
Yeah.
Okay. So it's, you can take your time, I'm just gonna start. So we've given a whole lot of information to the committee, and we've been talking about this project in the Buildings, Grounds and Technology Committee. What we, what we realized, the last time that we had a Buildings and Grounds meeting, was that the bulk of people on Buildings and Grounds, it's new for them. We had started this project ahead of time, so there was a lot of background information that we wanted to get to everybody. Where, the phase that we're in, we've already done a lot of the preliminary work. We were, we were approved by the former Buildings, Grounds and Technology Group to move to the next stage. So we had our partners, Select Energy and... So, um, we had our partners, um, Select Energy and Power Options at the Buildings, Grounds and Technology Meeting, um, and they, uh, gave us another rundown of, um, the project and what our next steps would be. And, um, we expect that they will be, so they, they did this little like mini presentation so that, um, they're not going to be here tonight. They're probably going to join us if we get this negotiated at the next meeting, um, and so to talk through the actual, um, contract. But, um, we just wanted to show you a few things. This is, um, the, the drawings that they've done. They've already, um, of what it would look like on our rooftop with, um, the equipment. Um, they gave, um, our, um, kind of a, we, we had to, we had to go through this process so that we could get in a block and the block locks in some of the pricing rates. So because we did that in the last group, we, we were accepted into block 10. Um, so it, this is a projection. If everything stays, um, relatively, uh, if through the negotiation stays, uh, where it is, this would be our projected savings over 20 years.
This is not null and act, right?
It is.
It is.
Well, you, yeah, this, just those three slides is, because this is a reminder, you actually got this, those who are here got this a long time ago. The newer group, we resent the big presentation from the beginning earlier in the week for those who hadn't been there. Um, and then this is just what we're talking about tonight to, so that, um, we can, we can summarize what they asked of us for next step. So, um, but just as a reminder, this is what the potential savings could look like based on block 10 if the conditions are negotiated within this way, which is, um, with all these assumptions and the, the calculator. So, um, just to give people an idea. Um, and then they listed the next steps. Um, so we'd already signed the letter of intent. We were authorized to do that by, um, Buildings and Grounds and a full school committee back in the fall. Um, we, um, need to sign the power purchase agreement and lease documents, which are what we're going over with council. That's kind of the next step in between this meeting and, uh, next meeting. And there's only a few minor details that we're talking about. Um, and then, uh, it would be the implementation, which they described in detail to Buildings and Grounds. I won't read it all to you, but they kind of give you the steps of, um, what it would be, um, be next. Uh, I'll let anybody on Buildings and Grounds who wants to answer. What they asked of us for tonight, uh, what, what I mean in the motion and what kind of is the same as the recommendation that came out of Buildings and Grounds, um, is that we would move forward with negotiations of the PPA and lease and authorize either the superintendent or the school committee chair, whatever you, you're comfortable with, to execute the documents pending the final, um, review at, of the lease agreements and approval. So they're just basically saying, can we go ahead and move forward and negotiate this to bring to the full committee? We're not signing anything before the school committee looks at it. So that, um, we can move forward and, and get this installed so that we can start spending some money.
So.
Question?
They are, they are asking us to, to do what? The school committee to do what? To go on to the next phase?
Asking us, asking you to let us go ahead and negotiate with the attorney and, um, to, to the final agreement so that we put that in front?
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we have a second from Nancy. All right, I have a question.
Well.
You didn't, that motion didn't specify who we're authorizing to negotiate on our So I, I think we should make that clear. Is it, is it Beth or is it Bonnie?
Could be both. That's, all they asked is, who would sign? I've been doing the negotiations with council.
Oh, so council's there.
That was specified. Right, and that's fine. I'm content to live, continue to be best, but, um, I think that that's not in the motion and it shouldn't specify in the motion.
Oh, you can do that if you want, sure.
Yeah.
And whoever signs, whoever you want to sign is, you know, is fine too, if you want to, but I think we'd wait for that part if we're going to sign something, so I didn't need that in here.
Is that, is, is, did David just make a suggested, suggested amendment?
He did.
I don't accept that. I don't, if, if either the superintendent or the chair of the school committee is authorized to sign, leave it at that. And if they, if either one or both are authorized, we don't need to go any further.
I think it, I think if I'm right, David, it's just that it wasn't in the motion.
Of who is negotiating.
Who is doing this in your motion.
So the suggest, so the suggested amendment is now superintendent Regal Budo or chair, chairwoman, uh, Silvers, uh, is authorized to continue the negotiations? Okay, I'll accept that amendment.
And will you, Nancy's second again?
Absolutely, second again.
All right, um, I, I have a question, which is, do the companies that, and whatever warranties we have related to our roof, how do we know that that is protected? Go ahead.
We, they have insurance. The roof has to be inspected. There's a, there's a whole list of steps that everybody has to agree to before this actually takes place. So, um, they're going to sign off on the roof. We have to have a person, they have to come and inspect the roof. So everything will be laid out before, in the agreement that we sign.
Okay.
But they've also done preliminary, so they did preliminary walks.
So they know we're okay.
Correct.
Yes.
All right, that's good because I don't, I didn't want us winding.
No warranties, we're not near the HVAC equipment, we're not, you know, they've, they've done all of those specifications ahead of time. That was the first part.
So it, it's clear, I hope, or you correct me, Arthur, or, or Beth, if, if I'm wrong, that this, my motion and the vote of the committee tonight is simply to move on to the next step of the process. We have not committed ourselves to any money.
Right.
To, to any action on our behalf, except moving along with the process.
Right.
Right.
So it's no harm, no foul, right?
Right.
It still has to come before the whole.
Right, right. Dennis?
Yeah, I, you know, I mean, I've, I've had a solar array for, you know, many years now. And the only question I have is that, and I've done some homework on these guys. They are, you know, good guys and all that kind of stuff. But what I'm having trouble understanding is if, when I look at their smart block 10 savings summary, what, what I see is something that's kind of funny is that, you know, they're, they're showing like a, here's how many kilowatts solar production that they'll have. Okay. And, and basically it's more than what the capacity is, it would appear.
More than what the capacity is?
It looked, I mean, it's 373 kilowatt hours, three, uh, 373, uh, well, thousand.
Well, that's what they're, that's what they're producing, is what they're estimating you will produce annually. Right? That's, that, so.
Well, I mean, they're, they're saying that the capacity is 373.4, but they're showing solar production of 418 point, or no, 418,000 or 41,008, no, 418,824. So I, I, I just can't, I mean.
There are, there are going to be points in the year, right? If you look back in the presentation where you're, you're making more than you need, and then there's going to be points when you're making less than you need.
Isn't, excuse me.
David, I think, did you?
Isn't this a question that's not before the committee at this time? Or isn't this premature to discuss the details of what's going to provide?
I think he was just, he was just.
Oh, okay.
Asking a curiosity question, not a, you have to vote on that question.
Okay, David?
I just wanted to address Dennis's question. Um, in looking at the chart, it's specifying that the, the flow capacity is 373.4 kilowatts. The production estimate is in kilowatt hours for the total for the month. So the figure you're looking at is how much you could produce in any given moment, whereas the total is in kilowatt hours, the, the sum of what we expected to produce in excess. So those are, it, those are two different sets of information.
Yeah, they, yeah, they, they show a, a total of, of, like, 419,000, you know, basically for, you know, for a year one output, you know?
Thanks, David.
We have anything further? In which case, let's take a vote on, um, Carl's motion and has changed, which is basically saying we are moving ahead with next steps. All right, well, we'll start over here. Sarah?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, thank you very much for the work on this. Really thank you. Yeah. Be nice to be, having that come back and, all right. Which takes us to our subcommittee reports. Um, oh, do we have any unfinished business? I don't think so. Um.
Not sure we could possibly hang on.
Right, we don't now. We could find some.
Shoot it.
Right. Okay, Sarah?
Uh, we don't have any, we haven't met, so we're.
Yeah, because we have our budget. Um, okay, Nancy?
Oh my gosh, um, community relations, public school advocacy. Um, as Beth said last night, uh, as Beth said, oh God, it's going to be a lot here. Um, as Beth said, uh, last night we met and, um, for the second time. And, uh, the, basically did the finishing touches on the, um, on the newsletter that's going out, on the budget newsletter. Uh, we know from past experience that the budget newsletter is really important because it gives people information to address their, uh, to pre-address questions that they might have, uh, speeding up the process of approval on the whole in most towns with a couple of exceptions.
I just wanted to know one thing, Steve brought this up.
Yet last night, there will still be the budget booklets at every meeting. So they will have the greater detailed information. Nancy, back to you.
Um, so, um, we also covered a lot of information, which, uh, Beth has already covered, but we talked a, a lot about, um, how to follow up on information that we learned from this February 7th community meeting. And a lot of ideas have come up, um, you know, Beth has already discussed about bringing in, uh, people from the legislative community, from Desi, from Mass Association of Superintendents and school committees, um, to see what they, see what we got, you know, to start to really show up and also to get the word out there that rural schools need rural aid. So that was one conversation, um, and also two, oh, sorry, this was February 7th meeting. Uh, you know, basically to answer questions that people have about the process, about the legitimacy, yeah? Would that be a fair description? You know, any legal questions, any functional questions that might be still going through the, uh, through the problem. It was brought up by a member of the public comment committee, that we should probably, um, and employ a lawyer to explain some of the questions that, you know, basically to look into the legal issues regarding some of the questions, some of that's going to be on finance, some of that's going to be on school closures, some of that's going to be on, can you give me a list of some of the other things because I'm going to?
Well, I really think there was one specific issue, and it's based on, my understanding is that I presented the summarized information to the group. Um, one of the main areas that was a repeated question by the public was on, um, you know, how many towns need to withdraw or, you know, what would happen if five towns voted for it and three towns didn't or whatever. So, um, that is a question that we received over and over again. So I believe the committee decided that they wanted to ask for an opinion, and I believe they made a motion, the recommendation.
Yeah, we have three motions from last night.
I'm just summarizing, I'm not on the committee.
Well, you know.
Right, right, that's right. Um, so any other things to say about that, the February 7th?
You should say what that motion is.
Uh, the motion.
Start with the easiest one, which is the approval of the newsletter.
And there's three motions here. All right.
Hold on.
All right. The motion, the community and outreach and, community outreach and advocacy subcommittee of the Southern Berkshire Regional School District School Committee recommends that the school committee approve the newsletter and agrees that it goes to print on Friday, April 14th, 2023. As the newsletter holds important budget information, it is imperative that our community members receive it prior to town meetings in the beginning of May where they will be voting to approve the SB RSD 2024 budget. This was approved unanimously by the subcommittee on April 12th, 2023.
So we need somebody to make a motion.
So moved.
Okay.
Seconds. But, end of discussion.
All right, seeing none, this is an approval of the newsletter, um, which will be moved along tomorrow. Yeah.
Yes.
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 Obstinate.
And yes, here. Okay. All right, so that's motion one.
All right, so, um, motion two. Um, is this the, uh, recommends that the school committee request from district council a written opinion as to what the possible outcomes of a split vote at the special town meetings would be called in fall 2023 to vote on a new eight-town regional agreement, thus forming a new eight-town regional, what, oh my gosh, uh, district with me? Um, for example, should town G vote for the new district and other towns vote no, would this fall under provisions of the current SB RSD regional agreement and require the approval of the other four towns to let town G proceed with withdrawal? Unanimously, unanimously approved on April 12th, 2023 by the subcommittee.
Okay. So we need the motion.
Need a motion, so.
To that effect, here.
So that's your motion? We need a motion to that effect?
Yes.
So made?
You, you can do it.
Do I have to say everything?
No, you can just say, you can just say, uh, the motion as passed.
Motion as passed by the subcommittee.
By the subcommittee.
Outreach subcommittee.
We have a second? We have a second first, and then we'll get, um, then we'll get discussion. Thank you, David.
Yeah, the discussion is, I don't know what the motion is. And I hazard a guess that the majority of the school committee members also don't know what it is.
Okay, so Nancy, go ahead.
May I, Nancy?
Yes, you may, David.
All right, I was at that meeting and I, I was, I, I think I was a driving force behind the recommendation. Basically what I recommended, and Nancy can clarify if this is approximately, um, if this is what the committee is actually recommending, but, um, that we don't know if four of the five towns vote to dissolve the district and move into the, the new eight-town district, regional school district. Um, it seems to be unknown if we could in fact dissolve the district under those conditions or if it has to be unanimous. And so the, the idea, the, the recommendation is that we need to find out from council what would happen if we can dissolve the district or if we're bound by the current rules for a member town leaving the district, which as I understand, it does require unanimous consent, um, so that we can know what we're looking at and advise the towns about what we're going into in preparation for the, the potential of the merge. Do I have that right, Bonnie?
Was that it not be? That it be Southern Berkshire Regional School District getting its council to weigh in on the process should one town or two towns determine that, yes, we want to be part of this new district and other towns say no.
That's, that's all a matter of law. And if you're asking, if we are paying our council whatever we're paying them, $200, $250 an answer, uh, uh, an hour to answer a hype, a purely hypothetical question, uh, if. question, uh, if councils, if count, no, please.
Yep, go ahead.
Um, if, uh, if council is wise, council will say, you're asking me to weigh in on a hypothetical question, and do you really wanna spend money asking me a hypothetical question when it may or may not ever be an issue? It's a matter of law about what happens if, if one town, three towns, all of that is determined by Commonwealth law. Why are we spending money, well?
Okay, let, let me just respond to where this came, because, um, there are not totally clear direction in the regional agreement. So the issue would be the, you know, I, I could think of, you know, we've worked with a, a number of people at the law firm who would say, look, you don't have to spend another cent on this, this is an ambiguous area. Or the law says this. It happens to be true, I found out throughout the Commonwealth, that there are not regional school districts that have in their regional agreement the dissolution of the district. So we're asking, particularly because this came up on February seventh, you know, it's several people who submitted questions, what it means, um, if one or two towns in the fall take the action of saying, we want to go into this new school district, and others who are still part of Southern Berkshire Regional School District say no. So that's why it's, I, I would agree with you. If there were more clarity in our regional agreement, and unless, I mean, you guys were involved way back, if there were more clarity, maybe we could come up with a simple answer. Oh, that's true. No one goes that far back. So considering this was brought up, um, it seems that it is not a very expensive ruling to get. That's the reason for this motion. Did I explain your, what you said, David, yesterday, to a great extent?
I think so, more or less.
Good. More or, yeah, we're in an ambiguous, we're in an, sort of an open area, and the comment was, we should have a determination based on count, Southern District, Southern Berkshire Regional School District Council. Yep, Kyle?
Um, so, the question is, I mean, the, all the towns are voting on this, so, I mean, what, the school committee's lawyer is going to pay for the, the answer to this question? It's sort of, I, I mean, like, I don't, I mean, it's written in the agreement that it's an eight-town agreement, right?
No, we have a five-town agreement.
The district that we're in.
About our five towns.
Oh, two, okay.
So what happens, what happens if one of the towns decides not to join?
So.
You know, if we can get a very quick answer, um, you know, I think, in our discussion yesterday, we were saying, we're not interested in this being, you know, the great dissertation, um, or a law review journal. The idea is, is there a simple answer to this? And considering we had people who submitted this as a question, what if this happens? If we can get an easy answer, let's get an easy answer.
Well, no, Kim, Kim.
Oh, I'm sorry, Kim.
Hi.
Hi.
I also think it'll quell any kind of rhetoric that's going around currently that says, well, one town can just leave or not leave as long as, and we can say, well, this is the process. It isn't, oh, yeah, I can just go. And that way, when somebody asks, we actually have an answer. Because there is a lot of dissonation about people saying, well, I just wanna go, you know, our town just wants to go, but it's not that simple.
Well, it is simple, actually, because if, well, wait a second. If all eight towns in this proposed district do not agree, if seven agree, the agreement fails, there is not a merger. So if all the citizens, pardon me?
So one town can sink the whole merger?
Correct, yes. One town can sink the merger. So if all towns vote for it, that means the citizen voters, the residents of each town, uh, vote to ju, to, for the merger, however it works, however it is, evolves, then there's a new district.
That's not the issue.
The eight-town district.
I'm not sure.
That's not what this is about.
What is this about?
What is this about?
So this is saying, say, Monterey wants to leave our district. Can they just leave our district, or is there something that they have to follow? Do the other four towns say, yes, Monterey, you can leave and join the other district?
And if we know the answer to that, what happens?
Well, we can answer it. We can answer the question.
On our current regional agreement, and Lucy actually outlined a lot of it, because it's in the new one, in our current regional agreement, there is a very clear process for a town making that determination.
Is there a draft ballot question that is, has been asked? I mean, I know there's talk about this new district, but has anybody, has any town ever put forth a draft ballot question?
This is all presumptuous.
Sort of like we're, we're deciding to investigate something that we're not quite sure is, well, it's gonna come up.
Well, it, it's because of the fact, at that meeting on February seventh, we had people, and we've had people asking, in addition to February seventh, what happens when you're at the fall town, special town meetings, and votes are taken on the approval of the new regional agreement?
Well, I mean.
Jim, Jim, let me get Jim first, then you.
I'm sorry. So, take Monterey again, because they came up there. Not to pick on Monterey, but, so Monterey decides, oh, we're gonna go with, um, Great Barrington. Do they have to pay the, the rest of, you know, our budget? Do they have to, what is the, that's the question, right? What's the, what's the?
That isn't the question.
What's the question?
No, that's not the question.
No, as, as I understand it, the issue is, basically, and if you, if, if everybody will just go home and read the regional agreement, basically, in the regional agreement, there's nothing ever said about how this district would ever disappear.
Correct. There is.
And that's, that's the issue.
About the dissolution.
That's the issue.
Okay. I don't think it is the issue.
Doesn't make any difference whether it's one town leaving or eight towns leaving, you know? That, that's the issue, there, there's nothing in there that says, here's how you get out of this district.
The issue here is different because of the fact that we are now looking at the creation of a completely new district.
Right. Be, be, plus coupled with the fact that the old regional agreement, which is X hundred years old now, you know?
Getting older by the minute.
You know, basically, they didn't think that part through.
It's not in there.
That says, here's, here's what happens if you wanna get out of this. Period.
The only thing that's in there is closure of a school. There is nothing about the other.
I think there is a withdrawal provision, I don't think there's a dissolution.
Yeah, there is a withdrawal.
I'm just saying, that, so there is that, but there's not a dissolution.
So we would need counsel on both the withdrawal and the dissolution?
And we could just as easily, if you're not comfortable with this, is reject the motion that came out of community outreach. Okay, David?
I think the crux of the question is, is, is the dissolving of the current district governed by the withdrawal provision, or is there something totally separate that is ambiguous?
Yes, I know the state has their own guidelines that you have to do to dissolve a district.
And that governs, that supersedes and takes precedence over our regional agreement.
And it still has to go through town voters, though, to withdraw. Am I correct?
Yes.
I thought so.
No, no, this is something we're paying our legal counsel, even though I'm counsel, I'm not the district's legal counsel, so.
But clarification wouldn't be bad.
Right, that was, that was the idea, that, you know, council.
I'd like to call the question.
Good. Okay, the question's been called. Um, we will take a vote.
Did we get a second?
Yeah.
Can we read the motion?
The, the.
I did the motion.
The motion, eh, on the floor is whether we are going to counsel to get an opinion on the, if a town chooses to not be part of the new district, and the other towns say they are becoming part of the district.
So withdrawal and dissolution.
Right, and there's nothing in our regional agreement that speaks to dissolution. Now, I don't know how you guys feel about it, you could jump down my throat, but we still have Lucy on this call. She may be able to say to us, this has been discussed. Would you mind if I asked her?
I mind. It's inappropriate. She's, she's not, she's not counsel, and she probably will fit, will believe, and I don't wanna speak for her, but I think she would have a conflict in answering that.
I just wanted, that's not all my question is. My question is, has this been discussed with counsel?
With whose counsel?
We, the regional planning board, um, has been paying a lawyer.
Right.
Not what she thinks, but my question is, has this been discussed? You don't seem too happy about it, I will not ask. Therefore, let's go back, the question's been called, let's go back to the motion, um, and we will start, David, with you?
Yes.
Okay, Nancy?
Yes.
What?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes, no.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So could you just, the people who said no.
Art, Art, and, and.
And you, okay. All right, thank you. So that's all we'll be doing. All right, and you have a third motion.
I have a third motion. Hold on a second, I have a reminder. Um, let's see, I'm not a good reader, I'll do apologies. Um, so the next thing, the next motion that came up, um, was related to, and again, stop me if I screw this up, too, um, the next one was related to, um, recommending that, um, the S B R P, I'm looking at this and it's not reading since.
That's the planning board.
Okay, correct. Uh, that the finance subcommittee and its consultants provide a forum for the five towns of the Southern Berkshire Regional School District to gain the necessary responses to questions and concerns raised by the communities during the February seventh, twenty twenty-three community convening, and at other times over the course of the past eighteen months to years. This forum would be held in the TAC PAC on the main stage of the Southern Berkshire Regional School District, and it should be held after the start of the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, but not less than thirty days before the first of the towns holds its special town meeting. The Southern Berkshire Regional School District School Committee will assume the responsibility of compiling the questions and concerns to be addressed at the forum. Did I get that close to? All right, thank you. Um, approved, and this was also approved unanimously at the meeting last night of April twelfth, twenty twenty-three.
I'm just gonna say this maybe a little louder. Read it again, I don't know if everybody heard.
Oh.
Did everybody hear?
Nancy, can you read it again?
I did. A little bit louder. The Community Outreach and Advocacy Subcommittee of the Southern Berkshire Regional School District School Committee recommends to the full school committee that it requests the Southern Berkshire Regional Planning Board's Finance Subcommittee and its consultants to provide a forum for the five towns of the Southern Berkshire Regional School District to gain the necessary responses to questions and concerns raised by the communities during the February seventh, twenty twenty-three community convening, and at other times over the course of the past eighteen months to two years. This forum is to be held in the TAC PAC on the main campus of Southern Berkshire Regional School District, and it should be held after the start of the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year, but not less than thirty days before the first of the towns holds its special town meeting. The Southern Berkshire Regional School District School Committee will assume the responsibility of compiling the questions and concerns to be addressed in, at the forum, approved unanimously for twelfth, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you, Nancy.
Okay, we need someone to make the motion to that effect.
I make a motion as it was read?
Okay, do we have a second on that?
A second.
Okay, we have a second on that? All right, any discussion questions?
I'd like to be on the rec, I'd like it to be on the record of exactly what the motion is, because if everything that Ms. Worthington said is part of the motion, if the meeting can't be held, for example, in the TAC PAC, the motion, eh, eh, the motion that's been approved won't be complied with. The more language you put in a motion, as that was done, the more difficult it is to comply with, to understand what it says.
Carl.
Yeah?
What if we remove that clause?
There's, there's a whole batch of other stuff, to be held in a certain time and place.
Well, no, those things are very important.
Well, okay, I mean, I just.
In our discussion, because we need, it should not be held during the summer. It should be held at least, in our discussion yesterday, it should be held at least thirty days prior to the first.
It's okay, I mean, I, I can tell you, well, I won't tell you in advance that I can't possibly vote to approve that motion, but go ahead, if the committee wants to do that, to commit themselves to that complicated, wordy, overly long motion, they can do it.
That's what happens when you let me write.
May I amend the motion and remove TAC PAC to, um, a future designated place, or that, you know, is deemed suitable at the time and is available? I mean.
What?
I would just remove it.
Just remove it?
Just remove it. No matter where. So it doesn't matter location?
Right, you could hold it on the loose at tonic.
River party. Very specific. David is.
Okay, David, you first, then Dennis.
Um, I would actually, eh, eh, recommend that we amend the motion to specify that it's at the discretion of the, um, the sub, the Community Outreach Subcommittee, so that they're able to negotiate that in good faith with the members of the Finance Subcommittee of the Regional School District Planning Board.
You mean in terms of location?
Yes.
That's a simple solution.
And, and the exact date and things like that.
That's a simple solution. Al, he's making an amendment, is there a second to his amendment? Was that a second, or you raising your hand or something else?
No, just a comment, that, that.
Wait, let's see if we have a second. Do we have a second to David's motion? I'm quickly getting a headache.
I will second.
Okay, we have a second. All right, now, Dennis, go right ahead.
From, from what I thought I just heard, was, was that this would happen after all of the town meetings?
No.
No, before.
Or thirty days prior.
Thirty days prior?
Yes.
Okay.
Thirty days prior to the first of the towns holding a special town meeting.
So that way they have information when they go to vote.
Because what happened, there were questions that could not be answered, first of all, because the finance committee hadn't moved in to what they've been doing in the past month, and people really want, a, a lot of the issues relate to, what does this mean for my tax bill? and people really want, a lot of the issues relate to, what does this mean for my tax bill? You know, my, everything in my town has just been reassessed. Well, if everything's been reassessed, now what does it mean in terms of the capital part? And a lot of people do not understand, I mean, capital operations, they know that there are three different sections when they vote each year, but this is a real community-altering action that we'll be taking. And I think, when I looked at the summary, we had so many people who were questioning the finance part. That seems to be the, the, where we have the majority, whether it's, whether it's issues with what the building is cost, or where the numbers are coming from, that's one thing, but just not understanding at all what the impact is going to be on their individual tax bills, and especially when we look at what people are facing in not being able to continue to live in Southern Berkshire. You know, we have, someone like, one of our reps from Stockbridge said, it's not gonna be that important for us. You know, we could afford it, but there are a lot of places where they're saying, no, we can't afford it. And.
Might not be able to, and it hurts. So that's the reasoning.
Okay, any further questions? All right, so, oh, we have an amendment. The amendment is that the Subcommittee will take over the logistics? Is that what you're basically saying, of setting up this meeting?
Yeah, I was proposing that the, the Community Outreach Subcommittee would be able to negotiate in good faith the time and date and location, provided that it was 30 days in advance of the annual town meetings, and. And during or near the start of the, the new school year.
Okay, so that's the amendment we're looking at first.
And we have a second on that, so that would be the first action to approve the amendment. Start, David?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes, yes.
Look, I have a no, I mean, I vote no, but I want to point out something about what David said. David clearly contradicted your statement about the, the, the meeting being 30 days before the first.
Correct.
Town meeting, that's not what he said, he said 30 days before town meetings, plural. That's not what you want to do.
Before the first of the town meetings.
That's not the motion.
Well, that's what the motion is.
So reamend your motion.
So he has to reamend his motion.
So let's reamend it.
Reamend, David.
So it's, the, the re-amendment is that it's, the Community Outreach Subcommittee would be empowered to, in good faith, negotiate the time and date and place of the proposed meeting with, I, within minimum 30 days' notice before the annual.
First. No, it's not the, it's not the annual meeting.
These are the special town.
The special town meeting.
First, the first special town meeting.
Relevant to, to the topic.
And it has to be after the start of the school year, so we don't, excuse me.
Piss off a lot of parents, okay? That's the amendment, do you accept that as?
I accept that amendment.
Okay, let's go. David?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
And I'm a yes, that's nine-one on the, on the amendment. Now, we're on to the original with the amendment, which is everything you heard before, but now we've turned, we've removed the TacPac, and we're having the Nancy's committee do the logistics. All right, let's go ahead. David?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
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 No.
Yes.
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 And I'm a yes, that's nine to one on that as well. Whoa.
We got stuff done.
Okay, do you have anything else to report from your committee?
Uh, just one more thing that we were talking, we started talking, just a second, it's not just a second. We were talking about learning, uh, starting to work with the community advocacy, um, starting to become, raise our voices for rural aid, school launch programs and all that, and start to learn how to, how to be lobbyists in their own right, citizen lobbyists in their own right, as a county, not just simply district-wide, but starting at the district.
Okay. Thank you, you did a lot of work yesterday. Dennis, policy.
Okay, well, we, we have one, one policy item, which I know is unusual. But that's, that's the result of one of our senior judges in the Commonwealth of Mass, who basically, you know, passed this law that basically says, or, well, put this position in place that basically says, people can come in your public meeting.
Right.
Public body meetings, and basically yell at people, swear, and, you know, have complete, you know, street-level freedom of speech, okay? So that meant that, that in the policy Subcommittee, we had a, one of the longest policy Subcommittee meetings that only did with one item, which, which is B, which is a new version, BEDH, public comment at school committee meetings, which is the last page on our handout tonight, okay?
And this is first reading.
And basically, there, there weren't that many changes made, but believe me, it took us a long time to get to them.
For the people who are, you know, comparatively new on the school committee, you want to explain what happens with the first reading and then a second?
Yeah, with the first read is that basically, nothing, you take it home, you put it under your pillow, sleep on it, think about it a lot, and then at the next meeting of the school committee is when we actually then vote on whether or not we want to pass it or not.
Thank you. Boy, it was pretty ugly, the stuff that was sent out, on how crazy, you know what, we got from MASC.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I, I have a question for Dennis. What?
No.
Okay, I also have another question for Dennis. You're aware of the fact that policy BEDH has been eliminated? Not, not by us, it's been eliminated by, by the, by MASC. There is no BEDH anymore.
Well, not, not.
No.
This one.
No, any BEDH, it's been eliminated. You read the MASC manual, you will find that there's a simple entry, one sentence, BEDH has been deleted, as unnecessary.
Yeah, but, you know, that doesn't mean that we still don't want to have one.
Really? Even though, even though the Massachusetts Association of School Committees has said that, that it should be eliminated, we want to have it?
No, you know, we, we are an independent body. If we, if we want to have it in here, we have the right to have it, period. It's as simple as that. MASC does not rule our policy.
Correct.
They don't even any longer hold the policy.
I don't know what that means, but okay.
Well, what, what that means is that, you know, we, we went for some period of time where, basically, they outsourced that, and, and, and somebody broke into it and hacked their system. And so there was absolutely nothing going on in policy, you know, at MASC for like, you know, over three months.
Pursuant to this particular policy.
Right.
Which we just, our.
Had a first reading.
Right.
Carl has, has stated, it is now gone from, from policy by MASC.
Right, but our, these are our school policies.
Right, no, I'm not disagreeing, I'm just, I'm just saying, restating what Carl said.
And I believe, even though it's restating or it's stating our district's policy, everyone of our, virtually everyone, 95% at a minimum, of our policies track MASC's policies.
Yes, correct.
A large percentage, but I wouldn't say 95%.
I could do the math and show you that it is, but I won't.
All right, let's, let's put it like this.
I've been doing policy for longer than you, Carl.
Okay.
Oh, come on, let's not do tit-for-tat. I will take it upon myself to call and find out whether we should in any way be dealing with this. And if we have the right to deal with it and create our own BEDH, we have it before us. So that's where we stand. We had our first reading. Moving along, I can happily report, we don't have anything with personnel and negotiations, that committee. Let's turn to Art for buildings and grounds.
Our HVAC system is finally upon us, and it's actually gonna work in conjunction, hopefully, with the solar people, and they're gonna be working on this over the summer.
Great. And, and does that in any way impact, like, the splits that we have all through the high school, middle school?
No.
No? Okay. All right. And somebody will take care of having them all examined before it gets as hot as it was tomorrow, or as it will be? Because there was a year when they didn't follow through in terms of.
I mean, we're, we have a regular buildings and grounds maintenance, doing preventative maintenance.
Okay, great.
All the time, so, I don't know what that means, about prior years, but.
No, they didn't.
We just do our job, you know.
And you have.
They're walking around, taking care of everything, as always.
Because my question had been with the contract.
Yeah, it's fine.
Okay, you're taking care of it.
Yep.
Superintendent Evaluation, Jim?
I have a couple things.
Mm-hmm.
I apologize for completely screwing up at the last meeting about motions that we were gonna make, okay? Then that's all on me, it's nobody else's fault. The first motion that I was trying to make concerned training with masks, which Lucy and, I'm sorry. Bonnie and Beth have been working on two. Just as a comment, I'd say Dennis took me to a mask training last year, and it was very, it was very helpful. It was very useful, they do good work. I'd like to see that person come. The other motion we were gonna, we were talking about making, I think it's, and we've spoken again about this generally through meetings, it's important for us as committee members to be, you know, visible in the community, for, you know, we're, we're responsible for the education of these children, of the district's children, and we should be available to the community members. So the motion that I'd like to make is that we ask that a schedule of school events be presented once a month at the community, at these committee meetings, and committee members be encouraged to attend events that they have the ability to get to, okay? I will say, just again, personal experience on this. Last year, the Agremont School had a Parents' Day at the barn. A highlight of which for me was watching a former, a, a committee member lip-syncing with four preschoolers. What is it, who was it, say it again. Beach Boys songs, okay. It was a wonderful time, parents asking me all kinds of questions, I got to meet a whole bunch of kids who were really cute, okay? So I would hope that we could, we could put a little, a little effort into that. So that's my, my motion, is that we do that once a month.
Okay. We have a second to that?
I'll second it.
Good.
I'm on a roll tonight.
You're on a roll tonight.
Of course you are.
Wonderful. So that puts the burden on us to come and list out all of the events, which are already posted on the event calendar, or, so I just would ask, seeing we are a lean and mean staff, hopefully not too mean, that we think about a way to access that on our own, as opposed to asking us to provide that monthly. I think that's, you know what I mean? I feel like that's a lot to add to our plate.
It's on our website, right?
It is.
Yeah.
So I'm just saying, between the committee, if you want to pass it around, but ask, otherwise, are you asking administration to provide it once a month?
It's there, all that, I think what we're asking is that we agree to attend.
I'm just listening to the motion, which was you presenting the events, and so I'm asking if I am to be responsible as a superintendent for doing that, based on that motion. That's all I'm asking.
No, I'd be responsible.
Oh, okay, all right, I love that, Jim, I like that.
I'll look at the event calendar, and when Bonnie asks me if I have anything to say, I'll say what the events are.
Oh, all right.
Okay.
That's getting better by the minute.
I have a question.
You are.
I am.
Kind of a comment, kind of a question. If we're talking about the calendar of events, and getting that, at least in brief, maybe just in paper, put in our packets, maybe not even needing a discussion with the school committee, wouldn't that be a process better charged with the Community Outreach Subcommittee, so they have the information? They can just collect the information, get the sheet with that piece of calendar in our packets, so that, to kind of streamline that process, so that there's no real need to have a protracted discussion with Beth and the rest of the school administration? Does, does that make sense to everybody?
Yeah. But if Jim is volunteering to do that list, and nobody else has to.
Why not?
I want to back, I think David's point is that.
Maybe Jim can furnish the list to Community Outreach, and when they give the report at the meeting, they can say, hey, these events are coming up, because that's their.
Could we just like?
Boy, can't wait, for good, good and welfare.
Okay.
You and Nancy.
Me and Nancy.
Come up.
We can do this.
We can do this.
You can do this, I, I am confident you could do it. Come up with a list and, of events that we should have school committee presence at, okay?
We can do that.
Sarah can help you.
Oh, good.
Okay, and, and then we'll all, and then we'll all go to Butternut.
Is it Sarah on both committees?
I am on.
There you go.
And it's, and it's gonna wind up that we're all charged with going to Butternut every month.
Is there any paint and sips involved?
Is there one?
Paint and sips.
Paint and sips.
I'm good at those.
Okay.
It's next.
Um, all right, next. Carl, executive minutes review.
Well, you didn't vote, Lauren voted.
Oh, see?
I seconded.
Right, all right, let's, we're voting on the way that we are handling this.
Aren't we having a discussion first?
We did.
We did.
That was the discussion.
We did, that was a discussion.
I don't know what the motion is.
So I'm amend, can I amend it then, so it includes that? That, that Sarah, who belongs to both committees, is taking responsibility for the list, that she will be receiving the information from Jim and Nancy, and they're working together, and will be presented to the school committee? Did I get it?
I, I just want to read it of the motion, that's all.
That's the motion. Once a month, the school committee will be presented with a list of upcoming events that has been prepared by Sarah Pollock. We will then, with assistance, I'm leaving out, at, this is Carl's, there's too many words.
I don't think it was Sarah.
No, Sarah volunteered, I heard her.
She volunteered.
She said it would be a good idea.
And.
Because she's on both committees.
Which is on, and what will happen is, we will look at the list, and we will make, and the determination will be that members of the school committee will attend, they'll, will pick different ones to attend. Carl, talk to me that way.
This is purely.
It's going to be a world record number now.
Purely a decision by, to be made by a member of the school committee and not mandatory in any way.
Correct.
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 Well, that's not in the motion.
No. I don't think we need a motion to do this. I think we just do it.
Let's just, let's just do it. All right, please.
I think there's enough of us who attend these events.
Right.
I have three children. It pretty much covers half the events on that calendar.
Okay.
Sarah has two.
We just, we just need to see the list. All right.
Point of order.
Okay. Point of order. Yep, what?
I, I just, I think to Carl's point is, the original motion wasn't that Sarah would do it, or it was that, that Nancy and Jim would do it, and so I think there's an amendment that...
David, we don't, everybody, I'm going back to Good and Welfare. We've now agreed, Sarah is taking this on, she's going to work with Jim and Nancy, and we will try to get more of us out there without having a whole lot of steps in between.
You have to formulate a zone.
Okay.
Make everybody aware of what's going on and where.
Exactly.
And then you can go to what you can go to.
And please include sports events.
Oh, yes. I love sports events.
We have to withdraw the motion.
Motion disappeared.
Really?
Notice how I play my no rules. If there's no objection, the motion was withdrawn. Carl, executive minute review.
I'll report.
Okay. Curriculum Subcommittee, I know that we're working on having a meeting. Julie Wright?
Yes. I apologize. I didn't realize there were three people on the committee, and so the one you and I had talked about, Nancy, won't work. So I'm going to send out some more dates and times. It has to be an evening meeting.
Okay.
Okay. Lia, uh, to early childhood, Nancy, anything?
You'll read all about early childhood in the newsletter.
Okay. Liaison to the childcare program, yeah. Nothing to report on, and the regional agreement review Subcommittee has not met. Future agenda items. Do you want to speak to those, Beth?
No.
Okay.
There's nothing to speak to yet. Guidance in colleges in June typically, they, I don't have, I still don't have, we're working with Otters. I don't have the report yet, and I'm not sure that's specifically for me, but...
No. I just thought if you knew...
Yeah, I don't have anything about...
Okay. So these items are still on future agenda items?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, don't you want to go into executive session?